Win was real strong, but just strong enough that you can take it.
That's what he wants.
Maloney?
Present.
None here. Ochsner?
Yes.
Shalkoff. Donovan?
Here.
Kleinschmidt. Lightwine?
Here.
Dohmeyer?
Yes.
Need motion for declaration of legal meeting. Moved by Lightwine and seconded by Kleinschmidt at this regular meeting of December tenth be declared the legal meeting. Roll call.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt? None yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Shalkoff. Donovan?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Dohmeyer?
Yes.
This is the portion of the meeting we use for public comment. Does anyone have anything for the board to see? Welcome to the meeting. Now we have the reports from the administration. Mr. Rose?
Um, there's a few things. We have finals coming up very quickly. Hard to believe the semester's almost over, but next Friday we're getting out for Christmas break. The one thing that we have added, um, that will be a very nice program for a lot of our people that cannot maybe get out, game ball games is a program that's being offered called STRIVE, S-D-R-I-V. It will allow people to have live stream about a seven second delay from the actual event that's going on. Uh, we've ordered the equipment. The equipment's coming in. We have not gone through the formal training, but I hope that we can still go ahead and maybe videotape our Christmas program Thursday. Be able to have that out live, so if it's cold and people can't come out, they could stay home and watch the video itself, so. A lot of busy things going on, but school year, semester's going very well. It'll be open very soon.
Uh, just call your attention, just a couple items on the, I guess, page two, just the community projects. Uh, just again to call attention to the students and the teachers for two activities in which they have really, I think, touched upon the students, the opportunities to give to those that are not as fortunate as what some of us are. Our food pantry items that we collected was very successful. Five hundred pounds were collected and taken down by Mr. Khan and myself. And also the adopt the family program is still going on right now and has been successful. A little difference to that this year was that the pride teachers themselves involved the students in ways in which they could raise some funds to help purchase some of the items for the adopt the family instead of calling upon family members to bring it. And the money was kept in-house where they worked concession stands and did some things that was in-house. We didn't go out into the community at Fairmont to, you know, to solicit those funds. And I thought they were both very successful. Again, both students and staff should be applauded for that. And also I did not put in my report, our music concert on December fourth was very successful. Again, Ms. Jamison and Mr. K. Skinner do a marvelous job with grades five through eight, and it was very well attended by the community. And they all still, those that were there really wished we were in our theater. It was very well attended. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Rose?
Our K-2 program was on the twenty ninth. It also was very well attended, and so I'd just like to extend that invitation to you. The three-four musical program will be on Monday night at seven, and on Thursday nights the pipe program at seven, so they're usually pretty packed, but still a great, a great time. The kids work hard and staff works hard to prepare for that, so you're welcome to attend, attend that. Not in the report, but we just finished our double screener that we've talked about that we do three times a year. And so this week, we're going to spend some time with individual classroom teachers, and we would talk about the individual student data from each classroom and devise our intervention of plans for anyone not at Benchmark. But we came out with the highest percent at Benchmark that we've ever had. It was seventy-nine point six nine seven, which rounds to eighty, so we're going to celebrate some eighties decor dress next week.
Questions?
I think I'd send you an update maybe Friday. The state fire marshal had come here on last week. Wednesday, it was on the fifth, and we did a walkthrough, and we talked to him about a few things. We talked to him about a possible science room remodel, what we have to do to come up to code. He did, he did feel like we would have to sprinkle the entire building, but that, that he was fine with us doing it in, in phases and covering it over a five-year period, so. It's the first time I had seen him in the building. I think in his notes, it's the first time he'd been since like two thousand one or two thousand two, so it had, it had been a while. Uh, we've been, we've had a group of teachers and administrators working on a grading policy for the last two years. We've met probably on a monthly basis over two years. Of course, we didn't meet in the summers, but during the school year. And we're going, what we'd like to, to propose eventually is kind of a more uniform way to grade in our third through twelfth grade, so that we kind of have all classes and all teachers on the same page, so, so that an eighty-five percent in English means the same as an eighty-five percent in math, and means the same as right now, most of our staff are pretty independent on how they grade. And we have a, you know, we have the ninety-three to a hundred is an A and whatever, but we're talking about, you know, how much does a semester exam count and the difference between a formative and an assembly of assessment. And we'll try to get some of the board that information. We're going to talk to our staff. The committee is pretty much done working. We're going to introduce it to our staff at the work days in January, and we'll introduce it to the board. The board doesn't really have a grading policy. You have just basically what's been adopted in each principal's handbooks, and we're trying to, to get a more uniform type of, of grading procedure. I think the committee's worked very hard on it. We, we followed a book and the outline of a book, and we had a lot of good interchanges and didn't always agree, but I think that as a committee, we've, we've come to a great agreement. And I'll try to have some of the committee here in January as we start bringing this to the board and talking about a little bit in January. And then we will have some of the committee come and speak to you about it. So I just kind of wanted to plant the seed tonight. We'll be sending you some stuff to take a look at and to look over. I think in your pack, you should have had a first quarter of financial statement, and I said that I'd review that basically tonight. Currently, uh, through the end of November, that's the end of the first quarter. Our budget year starts, of course, September one, so September one through the end of November, you know, if twenty-five percent of our budget was used, that would be about on R, and we're at twenty-two point seven percent district-wide. We have not received any of our large quarterly ESU billings yet, billings yet for sped services and speech and school psych, et cetera, so, you know, that'll be a big chunk that'll come probably next month. So as this time, we've spent one point seven eight million, or twenty-two percent of our budget. We've had a total revenue of two million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, oh forty-eight, so that's where we stand after one quarter. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Rose? Can we move into the action items? Minutes of the November tenth, need motion?
Send them.
Second. Moved by Shalkoff and seconded by Donovan. The board approved the minutes of November tenth for the Board of Education meeting. Roll call?
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Light, Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Dohmeyer?
Yeah.
I was not sure who I was talking to.
Financial reports, need motion?
Second.
Moved by Dana and seconded by Mark. The board approved the financial reports as presented. Discussion? Roll call?
Ochsner?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes. Shalkoff? Dohmeyer?
Yes.
General fund claims. Uh, we had a total that was just given one hundred two thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents. Need motion?
Send them.
Janice Van Riden.
Moved by Shalkoff and seconded by Kleinschmidt. The board approved general fund claims in the amount of one hundred two thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars and fifty-three cents. Roll call?
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Dohmeyer?
Yes.
Building fund claims, need a motion?
Second.
Moved by Lightwine and seconded by Donovan. The board approved building fund claims in the amount of one thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars. Discussion? Roll call?
Lightwine?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Dohmeyer?
Yes.
Q cap fund claims. Need a motion?
Send them.
Second.
Moved by Shalkoff and seconded by Donovan. The board approved qualified capital purpose fund claims in the amount of one hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Discussion? Roll call?
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Dohmeyer?
Yes.
High school science room proposal. Need a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Ochsner and seconded by Shalkoff. The board approved the selection of Clark Emerson Partners as an architect and proceeds with the renovation of the high school science room project. The project's scope may include renovations to the science room as well as improvements to the industrial technology lab and addition of fire sprinklers to the existing facility. Discussion?
I mean, just a reminder of the timeline. What this would basically authorize is Clark Anderson to do the work, the plans, et cetera, to, to put out to bid. The board would then still have time if they wanted to in the future to, to reject the plans or when you put it out to bid and the bids come in and they're all too high, to stop the process there. Just, this just kind of starts that, that timeline for those things, just to, just to let you know. I think the original estimate would, this would be around four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, but again, that's just an estimate, so.
Was that including some sprinklers, was that right?
That's including.
The whole thing?
Entry into the school and along that back hallway locker rooms into the science rooms. That's what that piece of.
And that's what you were talking about. You talked to the fire marshal, and he didn't okay it, but he said he liked that plan or he was okay with it.
Yeah.
Or we wouldn't, I guess what I'm saying, we wouldn't have to go through the whole building at once. Is that what you got from him?
As far as he's concerned.
Well, I know he tried to guarantee.
We wouldn't have to do it at once. He did say, you know, he has to submit our proposal to the state office in Lincoln, but he said that for schools, they've almost always allowed us five years.
Is there any way possible to get Patrick and actually ask him some questions about that? Because I would rather talk with, with that and say, what do you want? Because personally, I would rather see us, what's the cost of the whole building? If I'm going to do safety, I want to do safety for kids. I, I, I just have this earthling secondary one. We need to do the whole building and get it done and just buy the boy. So I'd like to see the cost of, what are the costs of what you're saying just for the rooms, and then what are the costs for us as a complete?
I'm trying to remember, did we ask in gym?
I don't think he gave us a figure. I know that he was very impressed with the fire doors that we have and the way that we have our hallways broken off. He thought it was because of that, he thought the stages that we would go through would be fine.
He, he looked at every door. I think every door we had was a fire door, which he said that's pretty rare in a nineteen seventy-five building.
Yeah, he even commented when we were in the gym, how the metal work around the top of the gym.
Building was done right.
Well, I, I don't disagree there. It's, and I know your fire doors have to be at least a good four-hour door or easy, you know, but I'd just like to see what the cost would be for us, because again, my, my core aspect would be safety. If I'm going to do this, you know, and then look at it down the road and say, okay, we need to make it to the public, and if it's that much money, we'll let the other, we don't want the public to have a life.
Well, I have to take full sprinkle of the whole building. There's no doubt about that.
No, no, and you have to, for that, and that we both agree, but do you do it in phases or do you just want some to do it down?
And I'm with Sean. I think that we need that information before we really can make a decision. I'd like to see what those numbers come in at. Um, we waited a lot of months to get this information. We've only had a month to really look at it. I think it's a great project, but I'd like some community buy-in. You know, let's get some information out to the community and let them comment. I don't think we've given them enough time to do that.
That's one of the question I had. I, I know at the same time that we're talking about remodeling, we're doing some, um, any, that's not including in this project we're talking about.
The only one that's, the only one that we've talked about is doing the lift that goes down into the shop, but I think I have that, I think I have that on the estimate.
I couldn't remember.
That was, it's in the four hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
That's the end of the four seventy-seven? I thought what they presented us last time was four seventy-seven and then fifteen probably beyond.
Uh, I don't think so. Period. Not positive, but it seems to me like they had that as part of it. I think the thought was we have, we have to do the lift anyway. We have to do the lift or we do the science room.
Well, that's something that was mandated, you know, we're going to have to do it.
But they thought they could do it cheaper.
If we put it in, we did it all together.
I remember that. I remember that motion.
Most likely the guard and that girl are.
Yeah, I had it listed separately, so I don't believe it was part of the four hundred and seventy-seven. I have a list that is thirty-one thousand, two thirty-three in that. I'd say that financial summary, I think, last month going over our particular cost.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call?
If we prove this tonight, we could also say, it would hurt to know what would cost to take the whole building. And then you could decide later on when it comes down, when we get the bid. If we know we can do it now or not, I guess.
What this tonight does is authorizes Clark Anderson to develop the plan.
And we'd be, have some money down, not down, but invested, and, and so whether we do the, approve this, we could still do it both ways, even with or without the date.
The whole budget of all is correct. Just authorizes them really to make the plan, the, the plan for the, get it ready for bid, if the board chooses to.
To take it to.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Ochsner?
Yes.
Shalkoff?
Yes.
None no. Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Maloney?
I don't think I'm. Hold up here on this.
Okay, Dohmeyer?
Yes.
City paving assessment. Need a motion?
I'll move.
We got the bill. I'm sorry, discussion. Discussion? Is moved by Donovan and seconded by Lightwine. The board approved the payment of the city paving assessment as presented. And then there were a couple of options on that.
Yeah, I presented, since we don't know the exact figure of the, of the science remodel, that we just pay the one fifteen assessment. It is due this month. And then, you know, as a board, we could always choose to pay it all the rest of the next year or whatever, but I thought until we see what comes in, maybe we just pay the, the minimum required for us right now.
But there's no interest charge if we just pay the one fifteen, right? Or is there an interest charge on the balance?
There's, Kenmore would have said three point two percent interest every year that you don't pay it all off, so. I believe it was three point two. I didn't bring that forward with me, I'm sorry.
But I was thinking that's if we pay the one fifteen, the balance is subject to an interest charge.
I believe that's the way I read it anyway. And we may be able to pay a lot more, but for now, we don't know exactly what it's at. We're going to pay it out.
I thought. I guess my question is, is that sometimes as soon as little we can do. But is, is questions? I know a private, you know, individual, but it is, as a school, can you back there? Will pay interest? Well, I mean, yeah, because we're receiving other plans, you just pay that percentage, not pay the interest?
Pay interest on our Q cap.
Any further discussion? Roll call?
Donovan?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Ochsner?
Yes.
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
City paving assessment.
Minimum.
It's four thousand.
Four thousand, sixty dollars and seven cents.
Okay, yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes. Dohmeyer?
Yes.
Audit report, need a motion to approve it?
Send them.
I'll second.
Moved by Shalkoff and seconded by Lightwine. The board approved the two thousand, one, two thousand twelve audit report as presented. Discussion? Roll call?
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Dohmeyer?
Yes.
Retirement incentive applications?
Whoever, if anyone makes this motion, you need to set a number also by policy. It can be set anywhere from zero, since you wouldn't accept any early retirement applications, or six at the maximum. We've been pretty consistent at setting two. Uh, we have two people that have shown interest. It's up to the board to determine that number, so if you're making the motion, if you would set that number also, please.
There's nine total.
There's nine people eligible. Eligibility is fifty-five years of age and at least fifteen years in service to not just Geneva and Fairmont, but Craft and, I think that's been our conglomeration of districts.
And if there's three or four and we set it at two, how is the decision made on which two get?
Oh, it's in the, in policy, I think it goes by. It goes by seniority, so is seniority age or is seniority how many you have in your district? I think, I think if you look up the definition, it's probably age.
Would it be beneficial to put more than two or not, or what's that do to our staff or?
It'd be fine, Mark. I don't know, but, I mean, we, again, I think it's been a win-win for the district. I think we've saved over the years a lot of money, and we've also, you know, rewarded good, good teachers, given them an opportunity to pay for their insurance for a couple of years out of that, so I think it's been, it's been great. Two has worked. I, I wouldn't like for you to set any less than two. If you set it more than two, it'd be fine.
I agree. I think this is a win-win for the teacher and a win-win for the school, so I, I would not have any objection to having the number of higher than two.
It doesn't mean that all take it.
And they don't have to take it. I just have my question. Is it normally used in the past?
There's probably been two years when nobody's taken it at all, and I think that the other years, at least one is taken.
Have you had many years where you had four or five apply to two?
No. I don't, I don't think we've ever.
Kind of figured that out at a time when they know there's only.
They kind of, they kind of have it jockeyed already, kind of who's, who's going where, but I, no, I don't think we've ever had more than two. I don't think we've ever had more than two apply that we had to tell somebody, no. I don't believe we've ever had that.
We've worked at least about three, if there's been about three.
If somebody else is.
I make the motion. I agree. I'll second.
Moved by Maloney and seconded by Donovan. The board approved accepting three retirement incentive applications for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school. Discussion? Roll call?
Maloney?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
None yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Shalkoff?
Yes.
Dohmeyer?
Yes.
Move on to the discussion items. Uh, the first thing is the board evaluation process.
Rod, this evening, Jody put it together today. Um, last month, we'd handed out the form, I believe, and she maybe sent out an email reminder to some of you that hadn't done it in, and, um, so that's the board's evaluation of itself, and I have not looked at it. She compiled it all, and, uh, it's six out of the eight boards that just got her stuff, and she, she put her together, so. I don't know if it's something you want to take and look at now and then leave it as a discussion item next month when you have a chance to look it over a little bit better. That way you can visit more about it maybe next month, if that, if that worked for everybody. And we'll, we'll indoctrinate PJ that way in board evaluation.
Board policy review, sixty-one hundred through sixty-one fifty.
Should have had a checklist. I hope Jody gave me a checklist, in the purple. I can't remember when we started this policy review, but it seems like it's been over a year, I think.
These are as, I mean, as they're in the book, right? There were some things where it says have been adopted and will be incorporated, and then there's some, some bold stuff?
To be honest with you, I didn't, I didn't look at it. Jody, Jody ran it off. To be honest with you, I didn't, I didn't look at it. Jody, Jody ran it off and put it in. But I'm guessing she got it right out of the book. She has everything on disk, so she might have printed it off the disk.
Okay.
To, but I'll check that.
So there's nothing that we need to add? It's really there? Where's it? This is already there? Where it says it's going to be written into the curriculum and the start stuff, that's already there?
I would, like, which one?
Um, sixty-one fifteen? That was the first one. That might be the one.
Are they, have to do with the state standards, probably?
Yes.
Yeah. Because the state standards are ongoing change time. So I think what we tried to do was, was write our policy so it wouldn't just accept any changes without us having to always go back and re, re-adopt our policy. I'm not sure what that is.
Okay.
But I'll check on that. Sixty-one twenty-five would be another one, maybe?
I haven't seen anything there. Sixty-one thirty there is.
Okay, of course. I think those are all.
And then we move on to board ethics discussion. I just had a couple of things I wanted to share with the board, board ethics. First one is our policy number thirteen twenty. The board of education shall transact business only when it is in open session, has a quorum present, and keeps official minutes of its proceedings. No board member shall exercise any administrative responsibility with respect to the school or the duties delegated to the superintendent, or any school employee, or as an individual commanding services of any school employee. And the next one is statutory authority, number eleven oh five. It's understood that the members of the board of education have the authority only when acting in a board illegal session, or when authorized by the board to act on the district's behalf. In discharging its responsibility, the Fillmore Central Board of Education will function as a policy-forming and legislative body. The board shall hire a superintendent of schools to be the administrative head of the school system, and place his responsibility for the execution of its policies directly in the hands of this executive officer. And then, this reads from the superintendent's contract. The board shall have primary responsibility for the formulating and adapting board policy. Mark Norvell shall be the chief administrative officer for the district, and shall have primary responsibility for implementation of board policy. The parties agree individually and collectively not to interfere with or usurp the duties or responsibilities of the other party. The board individually and collectively will promptly refer all criticisms, complaints, and suggestions called to its attention to Mark Norvell for action, study, or recommendation as appropriate. I am suggesting to the board, we, our attorney has a class in board ethics, that he would be willing to present to the board at meeting. And he thought he could do this at the January meeting if it's okay with the rest of the members of the board.
Who was that?
Kelly Baker.
I think it'd be excellent. I've been to a lot of Kelly's classes in Carney in Omaha. I think that's a great job.
We'll try to get this on. That's okay.
You're talking about in conjunction with our January meeting?
Yes.
Just so we're all clear, this is because I talked to two people in our district, and we've gotten the bills paid. But I'm not supposed to talk to anybody?
I don't think you were mentioning Sherry in any of this.
No, but where'd this come from? You were the one that called me and said Mr. Norvell had suggested this be put on, for me.
I said, we can't discuss board members in, in board meetings. I didn't mention you.
Did you call the rest of them and tell them that we were going to have an executive session to discuss this?
I didn't say we were having an executive session.
No, you wanted one.
No, I didn't say I wanted one. I said, would you be willing to have one? You said no.
No. If you want to discuss it, then let's discuss it in public.
We can do that.
Yes, we can.
Yeah. Let's say, yes, we can discuss it.
Well, then you two discuss it.
Well, that's not it.
Why is it an issue?
Well, that's why, like, when I talked to you today, that's why I called you, is what is the issue? Well, I'm reading this. I'm trying to figure this out. What happened?
Yeah, what are you talking about?
Because I don't know what stirred this up. And I seriously don't. And that's why.
I suggested to Mr. Norvell that I mention some comments about board ethics in the meeting tonight. And he agreed that was fine. And so that's what I'm doing. When I have a problem with a, or someone calls me, and they very seldom do contact, but if they do, my first response is always, have you talked to the principal or the superintendent about this issue? And if they say they have, then I say, then you're welcome to come to the board meeting, speak to the members of the board, and let us know your feelings on the issue. But I, as an individual board member, have, do not have the authority to act on or do anything about your problem, because I am just a citizen of this community when I'm not sitting on the board. I don't have the authority to tell an employee what to do. I don't have the authority to tell Mr. Norvell what to do. I don't, and I very seldom even call one of the principals about an issue like this. I will always talk to Mr. Norvell first, if someone calls me with a problem. And I feel this is the meaning of teamwork on a board. You communicate with your superintendent. You do not go out and try to solve problems on your own as a board member.
Okay, again, that's why I asked you, what was the specific, or do you not like that?
I cannot go into specifics if we don't go into executive session.
Oh, yes, you can. You want to talk about what happened.
I disagree. There's going to be names brought up. To protect some of the names we have.
Board names? Go ahead. I know who you're talking about. You have to do that in our exception.
I'm truly trying to figure this out, that. Because it's one of the ones that I, I'm not playing dumb. I'm not, I really want to know what is going on.
Don't go into executive session. Do not say anymore. Bring up any names.
Are you bringing up names of the public, or are you talking about us?
I think, just to, just to clarify, it was on an update, Sean, that I sent, and I mentioned two families' names that owed money to the district. And Sherry took it upon herself to call them.
And ask them what the situation was.
Which, which I feel is not the role of a board member. You know, I think, I think as a board member, you got to look at those updates, and you have to be very careful. You know, I, I don't necessarily think it's all confidential information, but I think it's information that you just need to be careful about using in the public. And if you have a question, I think I put a letter in here. If you have a question, I think calling Dennis or I to find out. But I, I just don't think it's a role of a board member to call an individual citizen in our district and say, hey, why haven't you paid your computer bill? You know, I just don't think that's the role of a board member. And especially right before Christmas, we weren't, even in the update, I said we weren't gonna do anything until January with the holidays coming on. And I just think it was very improper.
Do you know what I asked them? Did I ask them to pay their bill? I called them and I asked what the situation was.
It's improper, Sherry. That's my view.
Then maybe you shouldn't have included their names.
Yeah, I, I put too much trust in some people on the board, I agree.
I guess, I think you're just riding that with it, and you just, you can shut this down and move on. Doesn't matter. Hey, it's one of the ones that sounds like, you know, hey, and Mark, please take this the right way. If, if there was the issue, did you contact, you know, both of you two, did you contact Sherry to say, hey, you need to sit down and have a meeting? I mean, if that's the issue, I don't know. I'm just, like I said, again, guys, you're talking, what is a board, and what are we supposed to be responsible for? What are we supposed to do? We're talking team, we're talking all this stuff. And we're talking around the circle. If, if there's an issue, that's fine. Call me on the carpet. You know, if I do something, call me on the carpet. I'll defend it. You know, and if I'm wrong, I'll accept I'm wrong. But if I'm right, then, then I'm gonna accept that I'm right, and then we're gonna do something different. That's my two cents.
Anything else?
Nope, that's my two cents, Ford.
Then will anyone else have anything more on board ethics? The next discussion item is review and discuss superintendent evaluation and superintendent contract.
I don't, I don't think there's probably a lot to talk about. Dennis met with me, we went over the evaluation, and we put it on file. And he did a nice job of going through it with me, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate the work on the board of doing that. As far as the contract goes, it's just a reminder to you that my contract comes up for renewal for, in January, so you'll be voting on that in January. I already have a contract for next year, which would be the thirteen, fourteen school year, so that you would be voting on the fourteen, fifteen school year. And I came here with a two-year contract, and the board's been good about continuing that two-year contract.
Mr. Gentleman, do you, again, are you going to send out the final to the rest of us on the evaluation, or do you think what the final will look like? I have no problems to look at, or sit down with you and look at it, just to see what the final looks like.
I hadn't thought about it. Said we've never done that before. Send out.
Yeah, we did last year.
You need a synopsis of the evaluation?
Just the, the only.
Yeah, I can send that. I'll email it.
Were you, were you, work happy sounds kind of funny. Were you satisfied with the evaluation?
I think, I think Dennis did a good job going over with it. And he highlighted the things that we needed to talk about. I can't really talk a lot about it unless we want to go into executive session. But I thought, I thought, I thought it was fine. I thought it was very constructive, and I liked the way we did it, and I liked the process more, so.
I guess, quite a long one. But Jen was asking, you know, a year ago, nobody seemed very happy with the way this worked. And your perspective this year is it was a lot better. You know, more guidance, is that maybe the word?
It's just more useful.
My perspective, I felt, was more useful when it gave more guidance.
But I guess that might, but I want to find out what.
And I, I think you had the original idea of this, because if, you're not firing out, you know, a thousand different directions, you're pointing into one or two areas, and that's much easier to, for the superintendent, and it's much easier for the board, too.
Well, then maybe we somehow could measure if we made the progress we were holding as.
That's correct. There's major.
Or like last year, maybe we didn't have that in place to give to the.
And I think it is. The next board meeting is scheduled for Monday, January fourteenth, at seven thirty. Any problems with that?
Nope. PJ will be sworn in with the office that night. And then also, there'll be the board election, of course, officer elections will be that night. And then possibly Kelly Baker will be there. If not then, it will be another new meeting. I worry Mark will look, well, look at our schedule. And I need Dennis and Sherry both to sign check before you leave tonight, if you could.
Before we close real quick, you know, I think this is great, Kelly Baker coming. You know, now that I've re-elected, I, I probably shouldn't say this, but you know, here I'm going to serve another term. And I mean, I don't know, when I first got on this board, I don't think I even got this code of ethics. I wonder if there's anything we can do for new board members. You know, just kind of get, I don't know, I'm a list person. Can you just give me a list? These are the things you cannot do, in a certain way. And is, is there someone that can come and kind of lay that out for us? Or, or maybe it's something that you, you on staff can do. I, I just think sometimes you do things that, you know, when that, someone comes to you and wants some help, you want to help them. But it'd be nice if we had more of a structured rule.
A manual, a manual.
And I know you had some like that.
I thought this list that he provided was very, this, if you go down that list, and you do all those things, it's on that list. You're a darn good. And no one's a hundred percent on that list.
You know, it's like, it's hard, it's hard for, I mean, you're, you're laypeople that work hard, and you do this on your, your spare time, what spare time this is. And if we're not going to involve ourselves in the going of a lot of professional development of board members, which is expensive, and you have to take off work, it's probably good to bring someone in every now and then.
Because I've gone to those. And a lot of times you'll sit there in one of those conversations, and somebody speaks up about some situation that's going on at their school. And that whole conversation is based around their issue. And you sat there for thirty minutes listening to what happened in another school that really had nothing to relate to you. I mean, I've tended to tons of those, and that's usually what happens. So, I don't know. It'd be nice if someone could come back there.
Burma Croker from the Nash, or the Nebraska Association of School Boards, that's what she does. She tells you what you can say, what you can't say, what's private, what's not private.
She's very good.
She's very good.
She's kind of, she's kind of semi-retired, I think, a little bit. She probably doesn't do it as often as she did before.
She was in Carney.
Yeah, but she does, she does a good job. People there that you two, she's probably more of a mess.
Is, I mean, is it something that's going to be expensive venture, or I mean, you know?
It, it'll be, it'll cost less than all of us attending one, you know?
We had Don Fritz somewhere. He probably should cut the ball rolling there.
Yeah, yeah, that was a good one, yeah. But you work more on how we can get along better. I'd like to just know, you know?
Well, there's one other detail, too, just like Burma. I mean, you get either one or both.
I say, let's try to.
I'll second. Moved by Mark, seconded by Jim, and this meeting, future.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Malley?
Yes.
None, yes. Ashner?
Yes.
Shelcock?
Yes.
Domar?